Good afternoon. I'd like to call the agenda or pardon me, the committee of the whole meeting for July twenty fifth to order. We will begin with our land acknowledgement. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who've walked this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, we'll call the meeting to order at four oh two P M. And we will look to the adoption of the agenda and I'll begin with administration. Any additions or changes to the committee of the whole meeting agenda? No changes from council? Now we're looking for motion to adopt then. Councilor LeBarre?
Move to adopt the agenda, the whole meeting July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion on that? Seeing done, we'll call the question if you can vote electronically now. Oh, do you just want to vote of medication? In favor? In favor? Okay, counselors Taylor and counselor Ostachik have voted in favor. Thank you very much, and that is carried unanimously. We'll give the counselors a second just to get signed in. Counselor Taylor's good, then we'll be off. Okay. If not, just let us know and we'll get our fix. Administration, we'll move to you then with action item five point one, the rescope of the Green Square Capital Sign Project.
Thank you, Chair, I will send it over to Stuart.
Thank you, Chair, good evening, and members, this report gives to return a proposal for a capital project that was not approved in the twenty twenty three budget process. It did form part of the town's application to the Northern and Regional Economic Development Grant Program. The town was successful for a grant of forty thousand dollars, of which five thousand is definitely for this project. So the scope presented today is slightly enhanced from the initial scope. And we are also looking for input on the log material that will be included in use. We are recommending that committee refer this matter to the next council meeting. Just a few details, the initial scope was consistent with the twenty eleven sign standards for the town of Hinton. My apologies, the report has an error and calls by standards twenty twenty two or twenty eleven. There's concerns about the durability of logs as opposed material. So we are re-presenting the log post standard and two alternatives with illustrations. The first is a set of black aluminum posts, which is an early idea that matches the original sign frame. It's quite a departure from our sign standards and meaning. And the second alternative is steel pipe painted the color of log posts. And that's actually, there looks quite consistent with the sign standards. There is an illustration there picture because town did use that standard for thirteen signs about a decade earlier. The enhanced scope additionally includes refreshed black things in the area, the inclusion of black metal silhouette public art, and some backlighting to enhance that, get affordable. And an update, and of course updated historical interpretive information on the sign basis themselves. With that, I'll take any questions and the committee have and Mr. Engerdal, our event coordinator is also here.
Thank you. Counsel, over to you. Counselor LeBarre?
So five thousand comes from the grant, so I didn't remember here's fifteen, so we would spend and buy the county grant.
That is.
Counselor Taylor?
So the old proposal was for wood and that ten thousand dollars fifteen years durability. This is for fifteen thousand, what's the durability?
Well, the signs that have been were installed a decade ago are still looking fresh and new. Maintenance is very, very minimal on that. Those are the ones where we utilize sort of I didn't say the color of posts. We could go with log again. We should apply a little bit more maintenance than currently we do at practice. We mentioned, for example.
Counselor LeBarre?
Thanks. My understanding was at buzzy time when this is, we decided not to report this, it was because we're gonna sort of complete sign stand. That was my understanding, I thought that that's something we we wanted to complete before we decided to do this. Is that something that's in your may currently, is it something we're adding or cutting out?
Thank you for the question, through the chair for us, really, we already have sign standards. What is on the tactical plan right now is wayfinding standards? Wayfinding is more about how, at what distance, the kilometer posts will be placed on trails, how we will direct people using our trails and between trails, for example, there is connectivity lacking. That's what you finding. This is, so the sign standards that we have are currently in use and they've been in place since twenty eleven. There's been some confusion around it, apologize for that.
Follow up? Yeah, because my understanding was the sign standards using log now and we decided not.
Please, Chair, if I could, yeah, that was my interpretation too. So we we talked about it a little bit as administration about the standards. The one thing about this proposal that we is the substantive discounting border before the standards on everything is that we have to do our reporting by February because that this has to go probably in the round by this year. So if it's still on the books, we weren't able to do a full sum look at our sign standards and bring it forward for review. And we don't think we'll be able to with time by the time we were worded the grants and brought this together. But it is still something that we we intend to do. We have been talking a little bit about what the mountain motif is and what the logs are, you know, what the preventative paintings are, looking at the discussing at least preliminary the option, but that is still the intent for the sign standards.
Thank you very much, I have myself next. In terms of the justification, if we are looking at the original, the capital project profile that's attached, the original green square sign, we see sort of like the the standards at the base sort of rotting and that sort of thing. I'm assuming another justification is the fact that we're gonna continue to deal with degradation of the base on those particular posts. You really can't control nature, that's something we're gonna have to deal with sooner rather than later, I imagine.
So to, thank you for the question, and to be clear, the sign has been removed because the posts were unstable.
Okay.
So what's most likely to be?
All right, Counselor, Counselor Taylor?
Why does it have to be done by February? You said it had to be done by February. Through the chair, that that was our grant agreement that was submitted with, or that that's what the annual reporting is required. So we have to have the expense by by that point, and that's where they expect. Okay. Fifteen thousand dollars up for, there's two types of signs, there's three types of signs, there's the wood, there's like the black metal, and there's like simulated wood, which I assume is that last picture. So that's for either the metal or the simulated wood signage.
The whatever budget council approves for this and whatever scope council approves for this is how we'll go forward with our R M P. It really depends on council's decision about the particular hook and feel that they they feel like they want for this. The particulars of the scope, except for a description of it, has not, it's not been supplied to end, right? They just know that we're facing the introvert signage at the start and doing a little bit of enhancements. We include that in the grant application to make sure that we were successful with the grant. So these small enhancements such as refreshing findings.
Follow up needed, Counselor Taylor, are you good?
So we don't know the cost?
We haven't gone to our R M P yet. Depending on the scope, we have to decide that first and then we'll go, and the budget, which is going to be fifteen thousand.
This is the, I kind of like the wood, the, I kind of like the wood looks, like this is the simulated wood look, and that's gonna last longer than the real wood look.
That's an example of the steel posts changes to look like the color of log.
Counsel, anything else? And then just, oh, sorry.
Sure, just to add one thing, you know, I think one of the big, one of the big things with the logs is full transparency, I think. Going with, going with laws requires maintenance, but I don't know if we've always been the most diligent about proper proactive preventative maintenance when it comes to these log structures. So, you know, if we do go with blocks, you know, that's, I think, one of the things this administration need to develop is those standards of what we'll do in terms of preventative maintenance. Also had with that green square sign, it was lost pretty much all the way down to the to the ground, which you usually never do. You know, the whippersnappers are gonna eat away at it over time and moisture sits on it, all those kinds of things. So, you know, typically you put them in almost half a foot or six inch sleeve at the bottom, so it doesn't do that. So that was just a, at least a comment that I have.
And then just clarification from the chair, right now the way we're gonna do the action is just that we're moving this forward as discussed to a future meeting of council, correct?
That's.
Counsel, anything else? Counselor?
Yeah, I'll move the Green Square Sign Capital Project proposal as discussed to the future meeting of council.
You're lucky, you carried it to speak to that?
Sure, I appreciate, you know, I I'm glad we're looking at this. I'm personally seeing all the degradation that we're seeing with the signs we're looking at this right now. I think we need to start looking at a different product for longevity and also last maintenance. So we also, I'm glad this is coming forward and this is a good place to start, Green Square, so.
Thanks, thank you very much. Counselor LeBarre?
I'm a little confused on this one, actually, and I mean, if we sit around and kick around what our own personal preferences are. I mean, Stuart likes the wood, like, look, I like the black, look, like, we don't have some standards. We're gonna end up with stuff, do it all over the place. Right? Yes, we have to have a look at this one because of time, but doing this stuff in particular, which is gonna be center court like that, without some kind of standard to work off of. I mean, we could have something that really looks kind of, I don't know, nice. So I think we just gotta be.
Counsel, any anyone else before we call this to question? Counselor Taylor?
So we're gonna discuss it to the future meeting. What exactly you, and then you're gonna bring back the question proposal, so then what are we discussing?
C A L?
Through the chair, well, other than high level estimation of the the costs, but typically we'll we'll have a budget request. Counsel will approve it with the type that we're going through, and then after, council has approved that, we will go forward to the R M P process and build it.
So, I think, to clarify this, we have one point, I think it's kind of essential here. Calling the discussion around your original project, which I know the problem, the problem that at that time committee closed, administration is to find a substitute for log posts, which didn't seem to be particularly durable. And I think that the aim of administration has been since that time to find something that looks the same but isn't log. And so primarily, that is what's proposed in this proposal. Although we did have an early iteration of the blueprint, which we usually thought was fair to present as well. It's not true that this being a very special location.
Counsel, anything else? Seeing nothing, then we will call this to question. That committee refers to the Green Square Capital Sign Project proposal as discussed to a future meeting of council, and if you can vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously in favor. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else before we move on to five point two? Seeing nothing, then we will move on to five point two, the magic lift carpet, or pardon me, the magic carpet lift for Collins Log and Hill. Administration, please.
Thank you, Chair, I will turn this one over to Nessa to deploy.
Thank you, CEO, Nessa, I'll turn to our manager, Ray.
Thank you, this report is the work committee is directed during the twenty twenty three capital budget deliberation for twenty twenty two seven five seven. Council requested additional information regarding usability of installing a magic carpet lift into Bogging Hill on Collins Road. Magic carpet lift for those walking this recording is essentially a conveyor belt used to transport people or items along the surface of, in this case, snow, increasing the ease with which users can reach the top of the hill and then slide back down. To provide this report to committee administration, we had the staff at two hills within the region who are currently using or are currently installing a magic carpet lift, those being Whiteport and Westlot County. Administration sought to understand not only the capital infrastructure costs, but operating applications as well. The first notable difference is that both Whiteport and Westlot County have installed their carpets at ski or tubing facilities, not to Boggen Hills. Administration then undertook a high level assessment of the Collins Road to Boggen Hill site to highlight for committee the possibilities and challenges of such infrastructure being installed at the location. Notable findings include, but there are additional ones in the report. The current grade is Boggen Hill on Collins exceedably allowable slope of the magic carpet for transportation of people. Either significant rivers or switchback style installation of the carpet would be required, increasing the initial capital cost of the project. Operations of the lift require at least two train staff present during all hours of operation. And while the lift does present the opportunity to generate revenue, it is unlikely that the Collins Hill is fit to draw within the region. And adding fees to a currently free recreational service is likely to restrict or reduce access to the hill as opposed to increasing the usability for hinting the varying abilities and benefits. Operations of the to Boggen Hill is currently, in its current configuration, costs approximately eighteen hundred dollars annually. And administration anticipates that capital investment in a magic carpet lift would cost in the neighborhood of four hundred fifty thousand dollars with ongoing annual operating costs, which needed to be approximate approximately between seventeen and forty eight thousand annually, depending on the desired level of service and operating hours. We recommend an action for this report, is that committee accept or report for confirmation? And I can take questions now.
Counsel? I have one, just in speaking with Merritt earlier today, he had asked that I just throw this one out there. Due to the the cost of the switchback, based on the slope of the hill, even though it was more identified for Collins, was there any preliminary discussions on alternative sites that might ease the cost of that within?
Um, we haven't identified a specific location, though the request was for Collins. We don't really have any designated other tobogganing locations at this.
That's fine, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Counselor Austin?
Yeah, I'm with the committee accept the report on the management.
Thank you, Counselor, do you want to speak to that at all?
Just real quick, I guess, I mean, based on the amount of work that's gonna be to construct this in that area, that's not sold for that. With the smoke and everything, you know, we have another suitable area. You know, I think it was, except as a permission at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, then we'll call it to question, that committee accept the report on a magic carpet lift for the Collins to Boggen Hill as information, if you can vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, any further? Counselor Ostachik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just ask if I can be excused from the meeting for a few minutes and first, I'm ready.
For sure, thank you, Counselor. Counsel? See here, anything further on this, sorry, counsel or administration, my apologies. Anything further on this part? No? Okay, then we will move on to five point three, phase two through four trail connect and the public engagement results, administration. I will turn this one over to you as well.
And again, I'll look to and sort of figure out the rate of. Thank you, Director. This report is the work committee to share the results of the recent trail connect committee survey that was conducted from June fourteenth to July fifteenth of this year, which will be used to inform and narrow the scope of the phase two trail connectivity plan and ongoing plans that will be presented to council through the twenty twenty four budget deliberation. The analysis section of this report details for committee findings derived from the survey from the survey results, which council may find useful in spring discussion today for providing future direction regarding the scope of future trail connectivity. They, that's, while all but one of the questions posed throughout the survey were multiple choice or rating questions, administration also incorporated a mapping question where respondents were able to pinpoint a location on the map to provide specific feedback that administration will further synthesize to present the second phase of trail connectivity. Communications Coordinator Buck is present to provide a demonstration of how administration can utilize this function. So she's just gonna use the click share device that we have, just to give you guys an example of all of the information that we can pull out of this map.
We'll be over on that.
Yeah, so this is the log data, and as you can see, each point on the map is referred to a comment. So we can see that there's eighty nine comments in this one section here, and then each pin is associated with the comment. So if we zoom into the area, we can see what each comment is. So this specific comment says the trail types are fine, making sure it all connects together is more important than making changes on the existing trails in that first single pin. So we can collect the data by area or by comment type as well. So we can extract all the comments separately too and see which comment associates with which. So if you have any questions about specific areas of the comment?
I do have one, I have Counselor Taylor in queue. Is there, that seems to be really interesting, just to get some of the specific level comments for a particular area. Is there any way for council to have access to this sort of cooperation between the location and the specific comment?
So right now, we do have the report that is on the site here. And the public facing report, I was not able to have these comments, or maybe I was just looking in the wrong spot. So each comment was.
It will.
So unfortunately, we business to the back end, we sure not very able to.
All right, Counselor Taylor?
Did anybody talk about this survey connectivity to the way that the park project trail?
So the map.
Like a major multi million dollar trail that could go ahead and the rest of it must connect to that, assuming, I don't know if anybody mentioned that.
The map comments, so we're only on the town site of the pin itself. So the closest pinpoint is this one here. Some of the comments are off the map, and those are outliers functionalities, but not basically. So it doesn't look like it from the first one.
Counsel? Anything, anything else on that? I guess, just a high level comment then in interpretive piece. So in short, what I saw was, you know, seventy two percent and seventy percent, you know, people speaking to just increase trail connections throughout the town, which is something I think we've heard pretty clearly throughout the last election cycle. And then as well, the, you know, the the ongoing concern for safe crossing over Highway sixteen. And then after that, we jumped down into the thirty percents or lower in terms of think that, and that's not really a question, that's more of a statement, I guess, for the rest of council, that was something that I took away from this. So I think good news is I see that that, those are concerns that are continued. Counselor Taylor?
Were they specific when they said safe crossing across Highway sixteen? Because when I wanna safely cross Highway sixteen, I'm basically like the walk, I use crosswalk.
Yeah.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Taylor. The way that the question was specifically worded is a safe crossing over Highway sixteen, as that was something we had heard previously during other engagements, just general commentary. We do have a few crossings, like just rough walks, right? However, they don't necessarily abut directly to a trail. So that's, we are looking at some additional solutions, kind of off of Greg App, that would bring you directly to that new property that we have on Highway sixteen. However, that doesn't abut directly to a trail on the opposite side of the highway. So that's more the goal we're looking for there is trail to trail, safety.
Okay.
Follow up at all?
No follow up, I got entirely new question.
No one's in queue, please.
I don't understand the show of twenty seven. What's the priority, what's the priority? Well, material priority one, two, three, four, five. I don't, I don't get what information I get from the different priorities, how that helps me. I don't understand.
So in this one, we simply asked, when people are recreating, which, with one being the most likely to use and five being the least likely to use, which trail type do they prefer when doing recreation? So if they're going for a run, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty even between gravel trails and asphalt trails as their priority here. People are less likely to use, for example, a natural or unmaintained trail while recreating.
Okay. Those priority five. What's, this one, what's priority five, what's that?
So priority five, in this case, when recreating, so people were able to rank them based on their priorities. Which generates five different pieces of statistical information. So with five being the lowest priority, when recreating, people, in this case, listed gravel trails as their lowest priority. So some of them list, like, so that small little red sliver represents number of people that listed gravel trails as their lowest priority.
So if you want to.
Yeah.
Counsel?
Counselor Austin? Yeah, first off, thank you, this is, I think, is gonna be very importantly important for base community core. You know, having, especially from what I just saw, and they've seen that before, you know, I'm moving the areas to be able to see the specific comments. So this is good to see, so I'm gonna move the committee accept like phase two for community engagement, because that's the important condition, so, thank you.
Counselor LeBarre?
I think, I guess, I'm really interested, is there anything that came out of this that you found surprising?
Thank you, Counselor LeBarre, I would say the biggest surprise that I had, I thought there would be a great, a greater interest in lighting in some of our parks, trails that we can only go through parks, just for the safety aspect of it. I didn't see as much uptake for that as I had originally anticipated. And I've looked significantly more support for specifically spending the dollars to figure out how to get over the highway. figure out how to get over the highway. That was shocking to me as well. Uh, of course, that was asked with a empty end or empty piece of information around what the cost would be, but that we learned that individuals in Houston are looking for us to explore what that possibly be.
And Tasha, did you wanna come?
I wish he's going to Turkey when he says the lighting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lavarch. Thank you, Administration. Counselor Hoss.
So just a question on the way, this issue I can actually link, um, you know, we hear a lot of park areas, and I know myself, some of the time it's not a big deal, but most of our time is winter time. So despite that, is administration going to look at a lighting in, in those areas, even though we didn't get specifically that, those feedback?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Hoss. Uh, there are some parks that have trails through them, um, where we know safety can be a concern. An interpretive part is one that we hear about frequently. Um, so it is something we're looking at, whether that makes it into phase two or potentially a later phase. Um, will be determined as we look through, uh, the rest of the results from here.
Counsel, anything else before we call this to question? Seeing nothing, then we will call to question that committee accept the phase two through four trail connectivity public engagement results report for information. If you could please vote electronically now. Okay, uh, well. Okay, sounds good. And we have the rest of council voting in favor. Uh, Counselor, there we go. Uh, that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, Council Administration, anything else on this before we move on? Seeing none, we will move on to item five point four, the robotic lawn mower for the cemetery. Uh, Administration, please.
Once again, I will turn this over to Ms. Truett or Ms. Wade.
Thank you, CAO. I'm asking. Uh, this report is for our committee to provide an update regarding the feasibility of robotic mower technology for use at the cemetery. I've corrected by council through MD two seven five seven. Uh, to provide this report, administration liaises with suppliers, other municipalities in sectors similar to that of parks, for example, at a lawn care company. Uh, to understand the current technology and determine if the use of robotic mowing technology would be suitable for the cemetery and whether its use would offer efficiencies to the park service unit. Uh, while there are numerous models on market for home use or small areas, um, for an area the size of the cemetery, there are currently no commercial models that would be sufficient. Um, as at present, uh, the use of robotic mowers within the municipal sector is limited due to the relatively small mowing width. Those that do use robotic mowers do so to mitigate safety risks for operators such as deep slopes, something not experienced at the cemetery. Other challenges include short run times and downtime for recharging, durability of the current units, um, and the inability of the unit to readily respond to changing landscape of the cemetery due to uneven or sinking, sunken terrain, new dirt filled areas, um, and monuments that sometimes change places or new ones are added up. Administration is encouraged, however, by the speed at which this technology is advan- advancing to meet the needs beyond the home. Um, signaling that enhanced units more suited for the rigor of municipal works are on the horizon and that the technology should continue to be monitored for applicable uses within the parks equipment fleet. The recommended action for this report is that committee accept the report for information. May I continue any questions at this point?
Thank you. Counsel? Counselor Taylor?
I would accept the do, uh, can I go with the recommended action, committee accept the report for information?
Thank you very much. Uh, do you want to speak to it, Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counsel, uh, any, any other discussion on that? Questions? Seeing none, we'll call it to question that committee accept the report on the robotic lawn mower for the cemetery project for information. If you can, please vote electronically now. Favor. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Council Administration, anything else on five point four before we move on? Seeing none, we will move on to five point five, uh, the twenty twenty four budget timelines. Administration.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this one over to Ms. Porble.
Thank you. Um, committee members, the timeline for the twenty twenty four budget is uh before you, uh, are remaining for bringing this forward. It's too bold as one to create the visual, uh, so everyone knows what the season will look like and targets for uh administration and council to even approve of. But we're also looking for dates to be set uh tonight for a budget workshop type event as was told in the twenty twenty three budget, which administration thought was quite successful and is open to some feedback from committee if uh there's something they might change. But specifically at this point, we're looking for a date before the meeting, preferably between uh between period of October twentieth and November fourth.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Counselor Hoss?
Uh, I'm gonna move the committee recommend a workshop to be held for the twenty twenty four budget presentation on October twenty fourth and length fifth commencing at four in November nineteenth each day.
Uh, yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, it, it utilizes one of our evenings, obviously, October twenty fourth is the two two, uh, and then the next three meetings, uh, putting a different on this. So, and I'm guessing that the things uh still need to be discussed and that be further dates uh activated or discussed uh after this. So, yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Administration, do you just wanna, I saw it heading on into, we just wanna confirm for any folks watching. That's the plan, is if we need extra dates, we'll just schedule them at that time?
Absolutely. Uh, we're very flexible in that. Our goal is to have the budget approved before the end of November twenty twenty three, so we'll put a team on that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, uh, Counselor Taylor?
Uh, I like these timeframes. They look like they were running further ahead than the on script. So I think I put them in a principle of the law proceeds to get the budget approved for the actual year. Let's hope we're on track. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Seeing none, then we'll call it to question that committee recommends a workshop be held for the twenty twenty four budget presentation on October twenty fourth and twenty fifth commencing at four P M, uh, and ending no later than nine P M each day. Counsel, if you can vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, Administration, anything further on that point? Seeing none, then we'll move on to five point six, bylaw and policy index. Administration, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this one over to Ms. Porble as well.
Thank you. Good evening, committee. Before or about approximately five months ago, we onboarded our like services, uh, personnel in the corporate services department and one of the initial tasks that we asked for her was to uh catalog all of the policies and bylaws for the time mentioned, and to start working towards creating a framework that will retain the intangibles as always moving forward. The touch for your information is a listing of all of the bylaws which we have not had the opportunity to go through and uh code as far as low medium or high priorities to be addressing, uh, but thought it was prudent to bring it forward now as committee may have some insight that they would like to provide to us as far as areas of urgency that they're aware of. We do have a little bit more work done on the policy cataloging as far as determining the low medium and high priority items that could be looked at and recently on wider their corporate, but again, maybe the committee may have some insight and some evidence they'd like to have brought forward sooner rather than later. And with that, I'll uh turn up the question.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Well, my only suggestion would be because of our experience with this one, and it's the council remuneration policy to bylaw, which is one that it is. We wanna, we wanna, we wanna do that well in the rest of the next council. We have that sorted out. I can remember if we wanna do that one? Or do we wanna leave that one for the next council? We want to have that done. Then they might go on next and also sort out their own page. But we wanna have that sorted out before, so I don't know what the common practices, but if you wanna do the bird, the former, then we might wanna make this a higher priority and start it sooner than later. There's lots of time for that. We have all of your work done, which is a time pressure like there seem to be last one.
I guess I'll, I'll put myself down in the queue just to speak to that. I think if we're gonna look at changing the policy itself, then earlier is probably better. Uh, just in terms of having a chance to look at it before the next council comes in. Uh, traditionally, the policy currently as it's written and outside committee is involved with determining what the recommendations are for council remuneration, so on and so forth. I'm supportive for myself. I'm supportive of looking at the policy if there's an intent to change it. It's just my team's thoughts. Counselor Taylor?
Just to clarify, I wasn't talking about change the policy, just talking about starting for the, uh, the, the work for the committee sooner than later. Maybe that's not related to what I'm talking about.
Okay. Counsel, anything else on this? Counselor Lavarch?
Well, I guess, so when I look at this, so what are we being asked to approve? The layout or the order of the? I, I don't understand what, getting all policies together make complete sense to me, but at the end of the day, I mean, is that what we're being asked to do here? Because, I mean, you guys know this way better than I do. I mean, I looked through that spread, people's meeting me as far as how that's been involved. So I'm just, I'm curious what we're looking at here. Did men, if you could comment?
Uh, through the chair, if I could. We, you know, we, we wanted to put everything together so we could actually get a handle on what we have. And then we also assign what we will leave for the uh priority listing for certain ones. And we really wanted to bring this forward more as information for clarity from council to make sure that we're on the right track. Things that we believe are high priorities as council agree with that, or ones that we believe are low priorities, uh, that, you know, we're, we're just checking in with council, making sure we're on the right track. Uh, is this ultimately depending on the, um, you know, the, the strategy is really gonna be, let's start with the high priority. Um, and then let's work our way down to the low. Uh, so we just wanna make sure that what we've assigned for all of these different items, if council would like to review that sooner rather than later, uh, where we believe that it's not a more critical than others, and we're looking to be bad on that.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Hoss?
Uh, no, I guess. I mean, we don't know all these, but I mean, it's with one said, you know, some of our practices are quite dated. Uh, also with our bylaws involved. So this gives us a good start to these where we could be looking on them. Um, so I mean, I, I appreciate, I agree with all the, the high ones that I saw, um, you know, uh, but it, it's something for us to work off, especially as we're doing business. If there's something that comes up and we can maybe identify that as something that needs to be addressed, uh, in this business. So, but I agree with, these are the most administration being the scallywag.
Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else on this? Counselor Hoss?
I, I did have a question on this naming policy. It would says current, um, I don't know, but we've had, I guess, one, one naming happening uh this recently, and there has been some questions on naming policy, and then they come to decision. Uh, so I don't know if, you know, that one specifically, if that's something, because there has been some, some indicators of wanting to name some places, but it didn't seem to be clear policy direction on that. So I don't know if that's one of the five. Yeah, let's see more.
And I guess just for myself, I, I, I can only assume that now that this list is compiled, that this can sort of work as a side by side with council during the workshop process. Seeing sort of, if there's anything that administration and council both feel need to have a look at, and that's the stuff that's gonna get accelerated through the, you know, the, the stratlining process moving forward.
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, absolutely. And then we intend on bringing these in to check-ins every now and then, just so we can kind of look at the progress that we've made and, you know, and certain things will become higher priorities as we, you know, uh, as we move forward and we've, we've identified maybe some issues as sets as they come up. So, uh, you know, I, I think this would be a, a relatively regular report to come, check in with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else? Counselor Ostachek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could move the committee accept the bylaw policy index report for information.
Thank you very much. Uh, would you care to speak to it or no? Counsel, any uh discussion on that? Seeing none, then we'll call it to question that committee accept the bylaw and policy index report for information. If you could please vote electronically. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, anything else on five, six before we move on? Seeing none, uh, we don't have anything indicated under information items, so we will move on to reporting. Uh, and so I will begin across the table with Counselor Lavarch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
I have nothing.
Uh, Counselor Ostachek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report this week.
Thank you very much. Uh, and Counselor Hoss?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report.
And I also have nothing to report, but we will move on to Chief CAO.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I don't have anything additional to report other than the action pending this that's in front of you. Uh, and I just wanted to, uh, if there's any questions about the contents here, I'd be happy to answer. And, um, I just wanted to lay this, we, we've taken a look at this as senior leadership, uh, because we, we had talked about bringing this forward to um, possibly committee for, for review. When we looked through it, there was a few, a few of them, um, a few of the items that we didn't know if they were relevant anymore, but, you know, in, in recent days, we, we solidify that we believe that all of the ones that are in the connection pending list we think are still valid. Uh, if council thinks otherwise, or if there's any questions on any particular one, if we have to answer to them, but, uh, you know, if there is an appetite for committee to take a look at this in possibly another format, but, you know, uh, talking to my, uh, my management team, we're comfortable with everything that was in the action pending list. Quite a, quite a few of them cleaned up. We, we certainly do still have a few that are, uh, a couple years old that, uh, that we wanna take care of, but we, we do believe that they're, they're still valid.
Counsel, uh, any questions on the action pending list? Counselor Hoss?
I don't think it's captured on this, but I'm just, I, I guess, maybe, you know, I'm, I'm missing it. But, um, I'm wondering, are we before budget, uh, commences of twenty twenty four, uh, there's been talk about reserve policy coming forward? Is that something that's coming forward for us before that? Before we start our deliberations?
Through the chair, yes. We've been on how to starting preliminary conversation since early this August second, and, uh, we would have ten dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. Thank you, men. Uh, any further questions on that? Seeing none, uh, then we are, uh, looking at moving into closed sections. We have, uh, two items, mutual performance and a taxi agreement closed per section sixteen and coming by. Uh, it's counsel. Counselor Hoss?
Uh, moving into closed session with the chair.
All right. Counsel, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, uh, if you can vote electronically now. And Counselor, uh, Taylor is indicating in favor of moving into, oh, I got you. There we go. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And we will move into closed session after a brief break to allow people to translate.